Mr. Clerk, at our next meeting, could we invite the acting director? I'm sorry. Could we invite the acting director, Ms. Perez, to our meeting? And could we forward the information, request information, rather, on the procurement process? Our committee is -- Councilman Rice, aren't you all supposed to meet procurement?
We're still trying to get a meeting date.
I thought I saw.
It might have been next week.
I saw.
My secretary was getting it.
The only reason I raise this is because I cannot believe that some of these items cannot be handled by Newark vendors. You know. So...
And the President, we also, myself, Councilman Amador, Councilman Ramos, were also trying to ascertain, I mean, the administration put forth a new initiative to help with bonding with small businesses and giving them the wherewithal so they could bid for those who couldn't have the capacity to do so. So we were trying to get some information as to where that process is as well.
Okay. Thank you. 7R1R, Mr. Clerk.
There's a typo in the contract period, July 7, 2007. All right.
Yes.
Counsel of the whole to adopt the 7R1R. And thanks to Councilman Gonzalez.
Again.
Amador.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Payne.
Yes.
Quintana.
Yes.
Ramos.
Yes.
Rome.
Yes.
President Trump.
I am separating the two of you.
Time out.
Please have to change all our statements.
I'm sorry.
President Trump.
Yes.
7R2A, ex-offender reentry services contract. 7R2B, ex-offender reentry services. Audits have been filed. 7R2C, neighborhood revitalization services, Club de Barrio. Excuse me. The two previous subrecipients were offender aid and restoration of Essex. And 2A and 2B was Goodwill Industries. 2C, I've already stated. 2D, educational services, Essex County appointed special advocates. These are all CDBG resolutions. 2E, again, housing opportunities for persons HIV/AIDS, HOPWA program, Isaiah House. 2F, housing opportunities for people with AIDS, HOPWA, positive health care vendor. 2G, Liberation and Truth Unity Fellowship Church, Inc., HOPWA monies. 2H, again, HOPWA monies, County of Union, Human Services. 2I, application for grant funds, summer food services program. 2J, acceptance of grant monies for HIV/AIDS. 2K, emergency medical services. This is the contract the city does with UMDNJ. I think the council is aware of that. Through 2K, counsel of the whole to adopt.
Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Amador.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Payne.
Yes.
Quintana.
Yes.
Ramos.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Rome.
Yes.
President Trump.
Yes.
3A, is a settlement from Economic and Housing Development.
This is to be returned to administration.
The council's direction was to return to administration.
Yes. 7R3N.
3A, returned to administration. Counsel of the whole, roll call.
Amador.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Payne.
Yes.
Quintana.
Yes.
Ramos.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Rome.
Yes.
President Trump.
Yes.
On 3B, Madam President, this is the purchase price refund of sale of foreclosed acquired property. This is in compliance with the court order vacating the city's interim foreclosure judgment. Title reverts to former owners. Engineering for A, revised stipulation of settlements. This was not discussed, is that correct?
No, it was not.
With the Corporation Council. Do you wish to defer this?
Yes, we're going to defer.
All right, so we'll vote, counsel of the whole, to adopt 3B, which is the court order. Roll call.
Amador.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Payne.
Yes.
Quintana.
Yep, yes.
Ramos.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Rome.
Yes.
President Trump.
Yes.
Counsel of the whole to defer 4A. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Payne.
Yes.
Quintana.
Yes.
Ramos.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Rome.
Yes.
President Trump.
Yes.
7R4C, Madam President, citywide tree planting program.
Yes. Yes.
Just the tree planting. Counsel of the whole to adopt on the tree planting roll call.
Amador.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Payne.
Yes.
Quintana.
Yes.
Ramos.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Rome.
Yes.
President Trump.
Yes.
7R4C, Madam President, citywide tree planting program.
Yes. Yes.
Just the tree planting. Counsel of the whole to adopt on the tree planting roll call.
Amador.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Payne.
Yes.
Quintana.
Yes.
Ramos.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Rome.
Yes.
President Trump.
Yes.
7R4F, that's the...
D, D, D.
Sorry, Mike. It's not clear on the paper.
7R, please. Counsel to defer.
This is the city hall exterior restoration. Counsel of the whole to defer and invite.
Restoration of Boys Park.
Yes.
Mr. Clerk, it's the restoration of Boys Park. 7R4D, on page 27. Oh, somebody's going to get it tomorrow. It's all right, Mr. Clerk.
Voice Park, 4D, yes. Deferring with a presentation by engineering.
Yes.
Amador.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Payne.
Yes.
Quintana.
Yes.
Ramos.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Rome.
Yes.
President Trump.
Yes.
For E is extension of the contract period for PS Environmental Consulting Services. Counsel. Counsel of the whole, yes. Adopt.
Amador.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
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 Can we defer this, sir? Deferring for a presentation, yes.
Yes.
That includes city hall restaurants.
Mr. Clerk, if we, the purpose, extension of contract period to June 0, 2003.
He's going to earn his money tonight.
Yes, Councilman, we're aware of that.
Good night, Ms. Evans. He's earning his money tonight.
Our council is a whole to defer 7R4F.
Amador.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Payne.
Yes.
Quintana.
Yes.
Ramos.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Rome.
Yes.
President Trump.
Yes.
7R5A, this is the financial advisory services for the city. Contract amount is $50,000 NW Financial. Council had extensive discussions on that.
Mr. Clerk, weren't we supposed to get a...
Excuse me?
Weren't we supposed to get something in writing indicating?
Yes, we got revised documents from...
Did we?
We got revised documents this afternoon, late this afternoon.
Oh.
From finance.
Everybody else?
I didn't get it.
I had to leave the office, so...
Yeah, I ran out.
All right, roll call.
Amador.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Payne.
Yes.
Quintana.
Yes.
Ramos.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Rome.
Yes.
President Trump.
Yes.
7R5B, stipulation of settlement. Again, did you wish to defer this until you talked to the Corporation Council?
We did about this particular one.
B and C. I realize that, I'm just saying, did you want to have further discussions with the Corporation Council, or is it sufficient?
I think let's move it. Let's move it.
Okay, B and C are okay. 7R5D, consent order vacating interim tax foreclosure judgments. 7R5E, reimbursement expenditures. This was spoken about by Mr. Zack and by the bond council. 7R5F, also the water capital projects. 7R5G, again, related items, water improvement discussed today. 5H, same projects, water sewer capital projects. 5I, outside buyers refund interest and cost, total of $16,000 some odd dollars. 5J, loan application, Department of Environmental Protection, brownfields remediation projects, also discussed today, 5K. This is a resolution regarding the state operated school district through 5K.
Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Counsel of the whole to adopt.
Amador.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Payne.
Yes.
Quintana.
Yes.
Ramos.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Rome.
Yes.
President Trump.
Yes.
7R7A, workers' comp settlement. 7R7B, settlement agreement. These were discussed with the Corporation Council's office.
Council is a whole.
Counsel of the whole to adopt.
Amador.
Yes.
He is.
Yes.
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 7R9A, recognizing and commending items. 7R9B, senior citizen cultural fashion extravaganza. 7R9C, designating to Remus Avenue in honor of the late Sergeant Papaliso. 7R9D, implementing school funding formula for Abbott District. 7R9E, the insurance funds execution of a hold harmless agreement for Belmont Runyon Elementary for youth summit, that's Councilman James. 9F, youth summit, again, Councilman James. 9G, supporting flag football tournament. James, 9H, Rice, constable appointment. Through 9H, counsel of the whole to adopt.
Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Yes.
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 Ramos.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Rome.
Yes.
President Trump.
Yes.
7R8A, page 35.
I'm abstaining on 9D.
9D.
7R9D.
Yes.
President Trump.
Yes.
10A, over water sewer, but the youth game. 11A, no, it's, we have to mention the exception. 11B, we discussed today, the case for, explanation of the commitment, for the city, similar item, what the city, funding for police operations. 11B, community group training. And after all, to that item, to adopt.
Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Yes.
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 Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
7R2A, ex-offender reentry services contract. 7R2B, ex-offender reentry services. Audits have been filed. 7R2C, neighborhood revitalization services. Club de Barrio. Excuse me. The two previous subrecipients were offender aid and restoration of Essex. And 2A and 2B was Goodwill Industries. 2C, I've already stated. 2D, educational services, Essex County appointed special advocates. These are all CDBG resolutions. 2E, again, housing opportunities for persons HIV/AIDS, HOPWA program, Isaiah House. 2F, housing opportunities for people with AIDS, HOPWA, positive health care vendor. 2G, liberation and truth unity fellowship church, Inc. HOPWA monies. 2H, again, HOPWA monies, County of Union, human services. 2I, application for grant funds, summer food services program. 2J, acceptance of grant monies for HIV/AIDS. 2K, emergency medical services. This is the contract the city does with UMDNJ. I think the council is aware of that. Through 2K, counsel of the whole to adopt. 8A1 through 10, move to first reading, five year residential abatements. 8V, intersection of Asser and then Velsor stop. 8C, was done previously. 8D, under first reading. 8D, bus lanes on Raymond Boulevard. 8E, this was the item that we talked about for capital sewer utility improvements. 8F was the water utility part of that equation. 8G was Clarion Lane parking restrictions. Moving all those items to first reading for the next council meeting, counsel of the whole.
Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Amador.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Payne.
Yes.
Quintana.
Yes.
Ramos.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Rome.
Yes.
President Trump.
Yes.
8H.
We're going to get there.
G.
Yeah, D is included.
D was done earlier under first... No, that was C.
Oh, yeah, D was done earlier under first.
Madam President.
Councilman Amador.
I don't want to sound like Councilman Gonzalez, but on the commendable items, 9 and 10, it's incorrect.
How is that, Councilman?
Oh, no.
It's a repeat with a different sponsors.
There's two people, so they listed it twice for the two names. That's why it's done that way.
They called you Augusta.
Yeah.
Madam Chair.
Oh, yes.
Yes, we're coming back to D.
Oh, okay.
Through G, with the exception of D.
Thank you.
Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Move to first reading.
Rome.
Yes. Presenting exception of D.
President Trump.
Yes.
H, which is on the blue sheet, is the appointment of Carlos Valentine, alternate number two, on the central planning board. Counsel of the...
I'll move it.
Ramos, second row, to confirm the appointment. Roll call.
Amador.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Payne.
Yes.
Quintana.
Yes.
Ramos.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Rome.
Yes.
8H.
We're going to get there.
G.
Yeah, D is included.
D's included. D was done earlier under first... No, that was C.
Madam...
Oh, yeah, D was done earlier under first.
Madam President.
Councilman Amador.
I don't want to sound like Councilman Gonzalez, but on the commendable items, 9 and 10, it's incorrect.
How is that, Councilman?
Oh, no.
It's a repeat with a different sponsors.
There's two people, so they listed it twice for the two names. That's why it's done that way.
They called you Augusta.
Yeah.
Madam Chair.
Oh, yes.
Yes, we're coming back to D.
Oh, okay.
Through G, with the exception of D.
Thank you.
Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Move to first reading.
Rome.
Yes. Presenting exception of D.
President Trump.
Yes.
H, which is on the blue sheet, is the appointment of Carlos Valentine, alternate number two, on the central planning board. Counsel of the...
I'll move it.
Ramos, second row, to confirm the appointment. Roll call.
Amador.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Yes.
Quintana.
Yes.
Ramos.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Rome.
Absolutely.
President Trump.
Yes.
Going back to item 8D, that's a deferral.
Yes.
Rome, second, Rice.
Defer with an invite, please.
Yes.
Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
8D deferred an invite.
Amador.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Payne.
Yes.
Quintana.
Yes.
Ramos.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Rome.
Yes.
President Trump.
Yes.
Bingo and raffle licenses. Counsel of the whole, ratify the actions of the President. Roll call.
Amador.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Payne.
Yes.
This is terrible.
Yes.
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 Yes. Counselwoman Rome, we'll start with you.
Thank you. A motion to Mr. Muhammad Dush for a traffic assessment on Martin Luther King Boulevard. It used to be speed strips in the area of Arts High School and St. Benedict's. And since we repaved, they have not redone the strips. And so I want them to go back out and restrip that area. On June 3, we're having a blood drive here at City Hall in the mobile van right in front of City Hall from noon to 5:00. And I guess for viewers who are viewing tonight, City View Landing homeownership opportunity is tomorrow. We waited to the last minute because there are very few homes, but we wanted the opportunity. We've been handing out flyers. We wanted opportunities for people in Newark to be able to purchase affordable homes. So tomorrow, City View Landing homeownership opportunity tomorrow in room B29 here in City Hall at 6:00. That's my motions.
Second.
Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Yes.
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 Yes. Councilman Rice.
Okay, for the sixth time.
Uh-oh.
I'd like to ask for an update from engineering to the traffic study I requested several months ago for the corner of Sanford Avenue and South Orange Avenue, again, by St. Mary's Villa. Yeah, I'm at that point now. So I'd like to make the motion then to invite them to speak on the status of that study request. I'd like to also, for the seventh time, we might need to request this too. I'd like to request Deshaun Wright from the office of the mayor to come before the council, if not immediately, as soon as we can put him on the agenda, either pre or special, regarding the restaurant review committee that has yet to be formed, yet to meet. And I do believe this is my seventh time requesting that. As soon as we can, as long... I don't want to overload the agenda, but we need some answers to this. The summer's coming, we want some accountability. And this is not a major rush, but I'd like to request Wanda Moore from the adult reentry program of the city to come before the council to give us an update as to what the reentry initiatives for adults is actually doing at this point.[1559.71] And like also, while it's not a new tax abatement law, I would like to get something in writing from the administration in terms of their new tax abatement policy, if you will, for the council's review. We know there's some new initiatives, some new considerations that the administration has for consideration of tax abatement that's been obviously made public via newspaper and PR. We want to make sure that we keep a copy of it, not only for ourselves, but for the citizens that they ask questions about some of the new initiatives going forward. I'd like to send a congratulations to all the SS County towns that had municipal elections this past May, to congratulate the winners, both the mayoral and the city council winners, just to encourage our cooperation as a sister city, I guess, to all the other municipalities. I think there might have been four or five municipalities that had elections. Orange, Belleville, Bloomfield.
Irvington.
Irvington. Those are the ones I can think of. Montclair.
Nutley. Do you want us to? You said all.
Not every town had them, but the five or six or seven towns that had them, just a congratulatory letter from this body to them. And lastly, I just want to thank all the West Ward parents and the members of the West Ward Collective Education Committee for a great education conference, the first Ward Conference we had for education in the West Ward. We had 150 participants, parents in the ward, great speakers like Dr. Barudi Kafele, Raz Baraka, Ron Christian, the Lacy Davis, a number of folks, Ron Salah Dean, and a number of other folks that participated. But specifically, I want to thank the members of the committee for their hard labor. The event chairs, Marion Bay, Dr. Beverly Roberts, G. Curden, and the members, Thomasina Anderson, Christina Wallace, Ms. Kwamina Beverly Wells, Renee Brown, Dr. Taliba Sun, Lyndon Brown, Dr. Elizabeth Achiba, Muriel Brown, Keisha Green, Wilhelmina Holder, Dr. James Orange, Muller Pierre, Sekusila and Muller Pierre. And also thanks to the Newark Public Schools, Dr. Marinara and SOT 5 and SOT 2, and Dr. Roger Leon, my aides, and the West Ward School parent liaisons, and all the principals of all the West Ward schools, too many in the name, but thank you for a wonderful event. We'll be establishing a parent academy in the West Ward as a result of that conference, and we invite all parents to contact my office if you have a child in the West Ward schools to participate. That's it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Amador?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Payne?
Yes.
Quintana?
Yes.
Ramos?
Yes.
President, front.
Yes. Counselman Quintana?
Just an announcement that tomorrow, you know, my office along with the mayor's office and the council sponsoring a meeting with the social club operators and owners at Immaculate Conception Church at 372 Woodside Avenue from 6:30 to 8:00. If there are any owners or operators throughout the city that would like to attend, you're more than welcome to. You can contact my office for more information. Request from the administration on the update on hiring of the historic preservation officer. You know, just over the weekend, we identified a property owner that was doing construction without having gone through the historic preservation approval process, and you know, even after the stop work order was issued, construction continued. This is an issue that, you know, I, along with the council, took on two years ago. We added the position to the city's budget. We've been told time and time again that they're looking for the individual to hold this position in the administration. The last time that I spoke to Director Pryor and his staff, they told me they were interviewing, and at this point, I think it's important that we do fill this position as soon as possible. To the administration, another notice requesting them to meet with Councilman Rice and I regarding Casperger Field redesign plans. We're going to be working together on a community meeting in the near future, and we need to have the opportunity to sit down with Mr. Dooley to go over the proposed design for Casperger Field. Thank you to my colleagues for supporting the school bond ordinance, which is going to allow us to start our work at Newark School Stadium, which has been in disrepair for far too long and is going to serve as the basis for a lot of the recreational needs that we have in the North Ward. And a special thank you to Councilman Amador for his support, and also to Superintendent Bolden, who's worked very closely with my office over the last two years to ensure that we have adequate funding to get the Newark School Stadium project done. Announcement that the demo at Elliot Street School demolition is going to start within the next four weeks. Got the good news today from Dr. Langren from the school district. I'll be in that particular area within the next week or two, just advising property owners and neighbors that the demolition will start very soon. An announcement, our application is out for my North Ward Scholarship Program. You know, last year, we awarded a little over $12,000 in scholarships. This year, we're hoping to reach the 20,000 mark. If North Ward seniors that are going on to college in September are interested, they could contact my office, or they can log onto my website and download the application. My website is www.Anivaramosjunior.com, or they can contact my office. Letter to the administration reminding them that this council did, in the budget hearing process, add $30,000 to the police department's budget to support the explorers program. You know, Councilman Quintana has been very much involved, along with myself and Councilman Rice, to ensure that these youngsters have the support that they need so that they can compete and continue to make us proud as part of this very good cadet program. But apparently, they have had a difficult time accessing, you know, the resources that they need. But this council did make that decision, recommendation, to add that money into the police department's budget for that program. Last, a letter, a resolution. I'm going to ask the clerk to help me get this resolution if possible tomorrow morning. Congratulating, you know, my friend and partner at the Youth Services Commission, the Honorable Glenn Grant, who was recently appointed as the head of the AOC. You know, Glenn Grant and I have worked together for the last six years on juvenile justice issues in this county, and he's really been, you know, the catalyst for a lot of the positive changes that we've seen with detention reform. And we're very proud of this Newarker, this individual that served this city well. We're very proud of the fact that he's now going to be heading the AOC. That's it. Second.
Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Amador?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Payne?
Yes.
Quintana?
Yes.
Ramos?
Yes.
President, front.
Yes. Counselman Quintana?
Yes, just the, to the Newark Public Schools, in terms of retiring number 56 from the football jerseys from the, all the high schools that have a football program, because that number 56 was Andre Tippett's number. And Andre Tippett, who was just inducted into the Hall of Fame of the National Football League, a Newarker from Barringer, and we're proud of him. So we'd like to make sure that number 56 is not worn that jersey by any other students, though, that we can pay that respect to Andre Tippett, as a motion that's sent to the Board of Ed. The other motion was very disturbed by the Star Ledger yesterday guarding the housing authority in terms of renting space. They are fired. Most of the people who worked in that building. What they need to do, what I said years ago, and I've said it for many years here, that they need to move back to 57 Sussex Avenue where people live, and they need to move into somewhere else because that building is too big for them at 500. That building can be paying tax rate boosts, can be doing house things, other things that just renting space. And I don't think that the Housing Authority should be renting space for rentals for companies. I think the Housing Authority should, should, start going and putting some of those employees in public housing where there's offices, space. 57 Sussex Avenue. I remember 10 years ago going there to, when they inaugurated the renovations of 57 Sussex, and it had plenty of space, plenty of office spaces, and I just believed that that should occur. And instead of, all the people that were laid off were working at 500 Broad Street. So there's no need for them to just rent the whole thing out and get themselves out of that situation. Again, the other motion, we had these companies that came, they did the construction in terms of the curves for the handicap access, and they did, whatever they did was, they put a new, nice concrete, but the cap, the sewer systems, they did not do anything to those sewer systems. They just put the concrete, new concrete. The cap basins are still the same. I mean, they didn't even do a cleanup job. And that's not only in one ward, it's every ward where this construction has been taking place. And I just think that we need to talk to our sewer, to the engineering department, making sure that they go out and clean most of these cap basins all over the city before we continue to have floods and et cetera. Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Yes.
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 Yes. Counselman Payne?
No motions.
Counselman James?
Okay.
Second.
Okay. First, clerk, I'd like to make sure that the request of information that was submitted by the Honorable Gray Spencer is a request, informal motions made by myself. There was six, there was, in a letter she submitted to the clerk's office, there was six points of information. I'm asking that that information be expedited to my office so in order that I can get that out to the community. My second motion is a traffic study for Renner Avenue, for Renner Avenue between Elizabeth Avenue and Clinton Place, but it's actually between, on Renner Avenue between Elizabeth Avenue and Bergen Street is really that concern. Coming around that turn, we've had several different tragic accidents, so that's one. I've asked for that traffic study to be done. I'm looking for it. 19th Street and 19th Avenue, where we border, I'm requesting a stoplight or a traffic study for a possible stoplight because I, you know, people just floating through right into your ward, coming right off of that 18th Avenue kind of border that we share. So I'm requesting that to prevent future accidents in that area on 19th Avenue, 19th Street, a stoplight. A request for a one-way street, for the traffic study to be explored about a one-way street on 16th Street near Madison Avenue School. It gets really tight on 16th Avenue, 16th Street, right there by the school, and it becomes very hectic and congested during school times, and people are trying to cut through to get to Clinton Avenue from Avon Avenue, so I'm very concerned about that. And that's between Clinton Avenue and you can say Avon Avenue on 16th Street. So those are all requests. Announcements, we have a flag football tournament that's been sponsored by myself and my council colleagues. It's not just me. I've been working with these street teams, trying to figure out which ones are the good ones, which ones are the bad ones, which one are interested in just parties, and which street teams are interested in doing more than parties, and this is the group that we're working with. This was the first request that they've asked upon me, i.e. also the council members, to show our good faith effort, that if they are interested in more than parties, what are we going to do to help them? So I told them, this was our first in securing Ottoman Field, in securing some of the referees and everything recreation has been total in support. On May 31st, we have eight street teams that will be competing against each other in an effort to show us who they are and what they're about. On the 14th, I also have them booked for a teen summit at Belmont Runyon. It's the same group of young people who are just trying to educate us on why they started throwing parties and what their parties and their street teams are all about. They're adamant that they're not gang affiliated, and they want to show us that, that they're more entrepreneurial spirit and that they would love to work with us in any capacity. So the flag football tournament was kind of a good faith effort on our behalf. So please come out on May 31st at Ottoman Field and just, you know, show these young people some support. They really are crying out for our help, and they'd be more than willing to help us in any community service projects in our ward, and they've been adamant about that also. Last but not least, I've opened office hours on May 27th between 4:00 and 8:00 p.m. at 555-557 Clinton Avenue. Oh, one more, I'm sorry, that's not last but not least. This is very important. A Cry for Help Productions presents Help Save Our Children and Stop the Violence, a powerful message to our communities. Come out, everyone, and experience this undeniable but powerful message that our children here at Chancellor Avenue School will be representing on Friday, May 30th, that's this Friday, at, I'm sorry, next Friday. It's next Friday at 6:00 p.m., located at 321 Chancellor Avenue, Newark, New Jersey, directed by Mrs. Lane Lee, who's the drama coach and a very excellent parent liaison. She does a lot to try to get support for that school. And one way we can show these kids that we really support them is by us just stopping by for one hour next Friday and showing a little support. Mrs. Lee does above and beyond, also with Principal Brown and the vice principal charity. They go above and beyond at Chancellor, and I'm sure this is something very powerful, and I'm excited to be there, and I hope anybody who's free could available, you know, one hour, like I said, and it's be put on by the 3rd through 8th graders. Thank you.
Second. Second. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Yes.
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 Yes. Counselman Gonzalez?
I want to send a letter congratulating the participants of the Newark Ambassadors Program sponsored by Berkeley College and the City of Newark on the graduation last Saturday.
Second.
Yes.
Roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes. Counselman Gonzalez?
I want to send a letter congratulating the participants of the Newark Ambassadors Program sponsored by Berkeley College and the City of Newark on the graduation last Saturday.
Second.
Yes.
Roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes. Counselman Gonzalez?
I want to send a letter congratulating the participants of the Newark Ambassadors Program sponsored by Berkeley College and the City of Newark on the graduation last Saturday.
Second.
Yes.
Roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes. Counselman Amador?
An announcement first, that Governor Corzine will be at Oliver Street School on Wednesday, May 28th at 2:30 to seek support for the new funding for school construction. It's approximately $2.5 billion, and it's projected that 10 schools will be built in the City of Newark, and I think it's important that all of us be there to give him the support that he needs because he's got some problems in Trenton in terms of getting this package approved through on the budget. So I also invite every resident that is from all sides of the City of Newark to be there if possible. 2:30 Wednesday, May 28th at Oliver Street School. Again, as I mentioned before, a copy of all the agendas and resolutions, decisions that were made by those, by the boards, zoning board, planning board, and ABC should be forwarded to all the council members, the agenda and the resolutions of those agendas, of those items on the agenda. Last, a thank you to all the members of the council for the support related to the appropriation of $2.5 million for the, for East Ward's special projects related to the schools. My sincere thank you on the $63 million educational fund.
Second. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Yes.
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 Yes. Mr. Clerk, a motion of solemn regret to the family of Reverend Willie Simmons on his passing from the council as a whole. It's one of what?
Yes.
Somebody, oh, you did it. Okay. We're doing, we're doing a res, okay. It was a preprinted, printed, preprinted, preprinted motion?
It started on the blue sheet.
Oh, I didn't have a blue sheet. The second is one of congratulations to Liz Deltoof, I'm sorry. One of congratulations to Liz Deltofo, a very active member of the North Ward community, actually the City of Newark. She received the honorary doctorate, a few main letters from NJIT at their graduation this past weekend. A letter to Mrs. Gray, Director of the Newark Public Library, asking that as quickly as possible, we locate a new site for the Madison Avenue Library. They had a, yeah, they had a, an open house to look at one site, and it may or may not be appropriate, but the children in the Clinton Hill area do need to have a library at their disposal. Last but not least, an announcement, please don't forget the African-American Heritage Parade this coming Sunday. As always, it's a great, grand event, and we invite all communities to come out and celebrate the heritage of African-Americans here in the City of Newark. That's it, Mr. Clerk. I'm sorry, yes.
Just want to take an opportunity to thank Mr. Ken Lewis, thank you for, to the parents that are listening to us, there was, the reporters from the Star Ledger were calling us this afternoon, trying to make a story about our children that are going to the competition, the explorers, the Olympics in Colorado. And again, the Ledger was ready to write the story about we can buy cars, we can do all these kind of things in the city, but we can't sponsor our youth. But if it wasn't for Ken Lewis taking the initiative, and I want to thank you, and we want to thank you, for taking that initiative and showing some people in the police department, showing them where the money was and what to do, because if not, those young people and those parents would have put their finger on the city council. So again, it's so, it's so simple sometimes when we come here and vote for contracts for vehicles and et cetera, and the next day, the vehicles are parked on the street. You know, and it's so great, but when it's for our kids, it takes a long way, and I just want to thank you, Mr. Ken Lewis, for taking that initiative. Thank you so much.
I want to thank you for wearing that beard, too. I want to thank Mr. Lewis for wearing that beard. Saved the day, by the way.
You escaped the whiplash. Wait, we haven't adjourned.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Wait a minute. We haven't adjourned yet, and that includes the people in the audience.
Counselman?
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you, everybody. Ken?
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes. Did I turn my?